Good afternoon. On behalf of the Mayor and Council of the City of Jacksonville, it is my honor to welcome you to this ceremony. I am Richard Woodruff. It is my privilege to be the manager of this great city. Let us begin this evening by an invocation from Pastor Chris Phillips, River of Life Church. Please stand.
Let's follow our heads and pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for our community. We thank you for community leaders. We thank you for people that are willing to sacrifice their lives and give of their time to serve this city. And we pray now that you would bless this swearing-in ceremony. We pray that you would bless these men that are being sworn in today, that they would be able to serve with integrity, and Lord, that you would lead them and guide them and bless them with wisdom, in Jesus' name. Lord, we thank you for this gathering, and Lord, we thank you for our community, and we ask you to bless us all, in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Please remain standing. At this time, I'd like to recognize George Barrows, Vice Commandant, Anzlo County Detachment, Marine Corps League, to lead us into pledge. Sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First thing I would like to explain is how to render the proper salute. I've seen it done in so many ways. There's no one here covered, other than me, so when you render the salute, put your right hand over your heart. Face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. As established by the United States Constitution, we have a privilege that few people around the world have, and that is the privilege of electing and voting for our leaders. The United States Constitution established that privilege, and that privilege extends not only to the United States federal level, but to the state level, and to the county level, and tonight, to the city level. As citizens, it is our privilege, but more importantly, it is our responsibility, to elect, to vote, and then support those that have been placed in office. Tonight, we come to honor that continuing tradition established by the United States Constitution, and that is to ceremoniously recognize and swear in for duty those that have been so elected. This evening, we will be honored to have several of our local judges who will be participating in this ceremony. Each swearing-in ceremony will occur individually. We would encourage family to join those being sworn in. We would also encourage anyone who would like to come up to take a picture to do so, but only after the ceremony of swearing-in that individual has occurred. So we will announce when it's proper to take photographs. At this time, it is indeed my honor to introduce to you the Honorable Paul Hardison, District Court Judge, who will swear in Jerry Bitner. Please stand forward.
Would you place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I instate your name.
Aye, Jerry Bitner.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain?
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States?
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina?
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith?
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge?
The duties of my office as councilman?
The duties of my office as councilman.
And maintain?
And maintain.
And uphold all the laws?
And uphold all the laws.
And regulations?
And regulations.
Of the City of Jacksonville?
Of the City of Jacksonville.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Judge Hardison, if you would not mind coming back up, I think there's several folks who would like photographs. So if you'll come back up, and we'll ask Mr. Bitner to put his hand on the Bible again. And feel free to come right on up into the front part of the chamber. Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to ask Judge Hardison to come back up for the swearing-in of Jerome Willingham.
Raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
I, Jerome Willingham.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain?
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States?
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina?
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith?
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office as councilman?
The duties of my office as councilman.
And maintain and uphold?
And maintain and uphold.
All the laws and regulations?
All the laws and regulations.
Of the City of Jacksonville?
Of the City of Jacksonville.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Photos, please. Anyone for photos?
Raise your right hand.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to welcome to the microphone the Honorable Charles Henry, Superior Court Judge.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Randy Thomas and family, please come forward to be sworn in.
I instate your name.
I, Randy Thomas.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain?
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States?
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina?
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith?
Not inconsistent therewith.
And I will faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office as councilman?
The duties of my office as councilman.
And maintain and uphold?
And maintain and uphold.
All the laws and regulations?
All the laws and regulations.
Of the City of Jacksonville?
Of the City of Jacksonville.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Step forward for photos. Please step forward for photos. At this time, I'd like to recognize Bob Warden. Invite him and his family to come forward for swearing-in.
He's doing fine. Okay, I instate your name, please.
Bob Warden.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain?
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States?
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina?
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith?
Not inconsistent therewith.
And I will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office as councilman?
The duties of my office as councilman.
And maintain and uphold?
And maintain and uphold.
All the laws and regulations?
All the laws and regulations.
Of the City of Jacksonville?
Of the City of Jacksonville.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
One of the great things about local government is we do not run as Democrats or Republicans, we run as citizens. At this time, I'd like to ask the Mayor and the six elected officials as council members to now take their seat on dais. Please join me in welcoming them to their new role. We're going to have an organizational meeting, as established by the City Charter. Once the elected officials have been sworn in, they are to have an organizational meeting to fulfill certain responsibilities of the Charter. At this time, Mr. Mayor, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Richard. I will now call this organizational meeting of the Jacksonville City Council to order. I want to welcome back all the members of the previous council. We've gotten a lot done over the last four years together, and I hope that we can continue to work together as an elected body for the citizens of this great city of ours that we live in. We're blessed to have such a competent staff to carry out the directives of this council, and we can all count our blessings for that. And I can't think of no other people that I'd rather serve with right now than the ones that are sitting up here at this dais, based on what we've done over those last four years, working together. And again, it's not always agreeing with every item, every iota of business that comes before the council, but it is our ability to communicate with one another and negotiate and compromise in the best interest of our public. That's what we're here for. We're not here for any personal aggrandizement or any gain whatsoever, but we work here for the city, for the people that live in this city. People that think we do it for the money, well, they need to check the public record on that, it's what we get paid to put up with this business of ours. But the thing about it is, we do it because we love this city, and we are all about the people that live here. We're very fortunate to be a different kind of city. We have our large contingent of military personnel that live and shop and play in this city. We're very lucky that we have such fine people, you know, that do come in and out of this community as a result of being in the military. They bring a lot to this community. We're very fortunate to have that mixture of regions all over this country. We're a little bit of everybody, you know? People say to me, you know, "Are you from here?" You know, there's a few of us that are from here, they're sitting up here on this board, we've been here all our lives. You know, people think that that's unusual. It is. You know, in the grand scheme of things, there's a lot of us that haven't lived, there's a lot of people that have only lived here a few years, but they're just as much part of this community as us that have lived here all our lives. But I guess I'm going to close out here by saying again that I feel very blessed to have these folks up here at this dais to work with and do the business of this city. I'll turn to any member of the council now that wishes to make a remark, and I'll start with Mr. Warden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I wanted to say a bunch of thank yous, and of course, number one would be thank you to the voters who supported me. Thank you very much. I take that really not as a reflection on me, but as a reflection on the council. I think it shows that they've been very well satisfied with the direction the city has taken the last several years, and I hope we continue to do so. And thank you again for that support. I also wanted to thank those friends who allowed me to put a sign in their yard, who perhaps sent me some money, who gave me some encouragement, who talked to their friends. Thank you so much. To my very good friends who spent time at my house and licked envelopes and licked stamps and stuffed envelopes and so forth, I can't thank you enough for your help and your love. Thank you for that. Of course, I've also got to thank my family. I talk about my crazy family. The love support that y'all did, the financial support, too. Thank you for working all day at the Oktoberfest on my behalf. Thank you so much. Of course, my mother-in-law, thank you for allowing me to be such a part of your family. Thank you for, I love you like a mom, so, love you. And of course, I also had two important folks who gave me some good advice, Tom Malum and Horace Mann. Thank you for your help in strategizing and planning out what we were going to do and so forth. Thank you so much. Then, of course, last but certainly not least, my best friend. Thank you, honey. Love you.
That's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Phillips. Well, I do have to express my gratitude to the voters that came out and voted. Even the ones that didn't vote for me this time, I'm going to thank them as well, because it's an effort to get out, and I know we don't have a big turnout on our elections, so the people that do vote, they should know that they are very important. Thanks to my wife Kathy, my biggest supporter, my mom and dad that are here tonight. I can't help but reflect back on my first election and the help that Dr. Kay Gresham gave me and encouragement that really meant so much to me, that actually gave me the confidence to come up here and try to do the best job that I can. You know, I'm proud of what's happened, gone on in the past six years. I feel like we're a better city. I know it's a better-looking city. We've got a lot of improvements to our appearance, there's a lot more that are coming. We have a lot of opportunities. We have probably more challenges, though, with our financial situation going forward, but we're all working hard toward the same end, even though, like we said, we don't always agree on every item. I think we can agree that we all have the same objective in mind, as far as serving the taxpayer at the best possible rate. You know, campaigning's always fun, getting out there and meeting people and talking to everyone. I want to thank my church, Trinity United Methodist Church, they're a big part of my campaign this year, they helped out with the thrust of my effort. Again, I just look forward to working with this group, look forward to working with the manager and the staff. I do feel like we've got a good group of employees, all of us as well are employees. Just thanks again, appreciate it.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Willingham?
Thank you. I've been doing this for a while, but it never gets old, and I think I enjoy it now much better than I ever did. I thank the voters, I thank the residents, and it's just great to have this opportunity to serve in this capacity. One of the things that you do learn from being here is the importance of partnerships, the partnership that we form amongst councils, the partnership that we form with the staff, and the partnerships that we form with the volunteer community really makes the city what it is. I see Mr. Forney in the audience, and Marshall Wright, and Vice, Junior Vice Commandant Barrows, and just really have such admiration and respect for all the community servants and the volunteers and what they give back to the city to help us do what we do. Going into this, I didn't know if I'd have opposition. You don't want to take things for granted, but my thoughts going into the election were that I'd just like to finish up on some of the wonderful things that we're doing in the City of Jacksonville. I wanted to be able to see the fruition of our public safety complex, and a lot of nice things that we're doing downtown that really change the face of the city, a lot of the things that we're just embarking on with our tourism program and investing in that way in this city. And I'm in constant contact with people who have grown up here and moved away, and this is a time when they seem more proud than any other for the face of Jacksonville and the things that we've been able to embark upon. So thanks to all of you, thanks to the staff for the wonderful job that you do, and it's just a pleasure to sit up here. And of course, we're part-time, but we have a fantastic staff of full-time people who do the things that make this partnership work. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Willingham. Mr. Bitner?
Thank you, Mayor. Four years ago, at a similar swearing-in ceremony, I never thought I'd be repeating this scene. I thought at that time, this term would be my last, my final one. But you know, as time went on, I thought about all the progress that's been made, the challenges that still exist, along with the opportunities that are there to take advantage of, to make Jacksonville an even better place to live, work, and play. And I thought, that's all very important, and I enjoy being part of that process. Moreover, it's been a thoroughly enjoyable time over the last four years, working with a council that is truly harmonious in terms of establishing working relationships for the bitumen of the city. This is a council that agrees on many issues, but this is a council that also disagrees at times. But at the same time, we listen to each other, we listen to dissenting opinions, and we take good advice from that dialogue. So the decision to run again was rather easy. After all, when you're making progress, having fun, and you have a great working relationship with the council, plus an excellent city manager and staff, what's there not to like? So I thank all of you, far too many people, too numerous to, for me to thank individually, but you know you all have a special place in my heart for your support, and also to the voters who supported me. I thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to serve. It's a privilege and an honor, and one I very much appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bitner.
I would just like to say to my fellow councilmen, congratulations again on your reelection, and I look forward to working with you this year.
This is quite a celebration tonight, not only the swearing-in of the new council, but it's also Miss Angela Washington's birthday.
Twenty-five never looked so good, how about that?
Mayor Pro Tim Lazar?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a congratulations to my fellow council members, and I very much am honored to be here with all of you and looking forward to our continued working relationship. So thank you.
That's our next order of business here, is we're going to look at doing these advisory committee liaison appointments. I'm assuming?
Mayor Pro Tim first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm jumping the gun, aren't I? Thank you, John. Let's do the election of a Mayor Pro Tim first.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Bitner?
I have the honor to renominate Mayor Pro Tim Michael Lazar for another term.
Is there any other nominations?
I move we close the nominations and accept Michael Lazar as, by acclamation?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Congratulations.
Now. Now, John? Okay, now. Okay. Well, do our advisory committee appointments, and I think y'all did such a fine job of the advisory positions y'all held in the last council, that I would just be totally, I would be doing a terrible job by changing up. So Environmental and Appearance Advisory Committee, I believe that is... Birthday girl, okay. Bold, I believe, is Randy. You still good with that, right? Board of Adjustment was Mr. Bitner over here. Community Development Advisory was Mr. Willingham. Planning Advisory Board was Mr. Warden. Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee is Mr. Willingham, and Water and Sewer Advisory Committee is Mr. Thomas. And do we need to take any other action other than those appointments? Okay. The next appointments are not exactly appointments, but they're elections to committees. We have the Anzlo Civic Affairs Committee that has currently been, our liaison is Mr. Bitner, and at this time, I would open the floor up to any nominations for that. I didn't miss anything, did I? Okay, good, okay.
Mayor, I move that Mr. Bitner continue to serve on the Civic Affairs Committee?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Right, currently, we have two members on the Transportation Advisory Committee, I think that's Mr. Warden and Mr. Lazar, Mayor Pro Tim Lazar. I've had no one express interest in this, other than the two current members. Is there any nominations?
Move for their renomination?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. So this time, since we have taken care of the organizational business of this council, we're going to adjourn to the atrium for some refreshments and a reception. Thank you for coming. So at this time, since we have taken care of the organizational business of this council, we're going to adjourn to the atrium for some refreshments and a reception. Thank you for coming.